Well, we are back from our recess and it's now 11:00 AM and we have with us Diane Casey Lee.
Thomas Ryan.
And Thomas Ryan from the Cape Cod Council Churches. So the floor is yours Diane.
Thank you. I'm going to be bold and offer you a state of the, rather a state of the Union or a state of the state, but a state of the faith community on Cape Cod.
Good.
Very briefly. Two weeks ago, I attended a forum at Community Action that featured Senator Murray and Senator O'Leary presenting the realities of the 2011 budget. And Senator Murray commented, among the many topics that she so carefully presented, but one thing resonated with me, that the current fiscal budget is projecting a shortfall this year, next year, and years in the future, and we're all very aware of it. And then she commented that there will be a cutback and elimination of earmarks, particularly in the 2011 budget. And one of those earmarks of our three priorities were critical services. And January, December, January is traditionally the month that the churches, I mean, all of the faith community across the Cape and everywhere, I suppose, develop their budgets. And it's the same process where committees come to the church financial body and say, Sunday School needs this amount, and the boiler needs to be repaired, and we need to do a cost of living. And what I've been hearing across the Cape is that the earmarks that the faith community institutionalized in their budgets for many, many years for outreach mission have been severely cut back, or in some cases eliminated. So that's going to impact, I fear severely, on the faith community's ability to respond as readily and as generously as they have in the past, the needs of the poor. What churches will do, because I have talked to many of them over the last couple of weeks, is they're going to, they have an advantage. They can mobilize their congregation and come up with some innovative ways to raise those monies. They were talking about summer concerts, picnics on the lawn of the churches, and to involve the community, involve summer visitors throughout the year of the traditional special offerings. However, I fear that it's not going to close the gap, same situation that you're in and the state is in. The concern I have is that that cutback or that elimination of those critical funds that have traditionally been available for pastors and for the church outreach committee to disperse across the Cape, for example, to Independence House, Angel House, Homeless Not Hopeless, Housing Assistance Corporation, even the Council of Churches is going to feel that. Conservatively, and I keep saying I'm going to do a survey that would be giving an accurate number, I would conservatively say that annually, the faith community contributes $750,000 across the Cape in outreach funds. So I don't know how much we're going to lose of that. I would estimate at least $250,000 is not going to be available. So although the churches will do everything they can to close that gap, I don't think we're going to be able to reach the level that we have in this past year. I know, for example, there's a church that has traditionally contributed, pledged $4,000 to the Council of Churches for our outreach ministries, and that has been totally eliminated. So that's $4,000 less that a baby center for babies, that street outreach project can use for gas to drive, Tom Naples to drive, a homeless person who's willing to accept detox off Cape. Little things that are going to add up. Somehow I'll find the money elsewhere, but it's a stressor. And what I like to pledge that won't happen is that if Tom needs to drive somebody off Cape for detox in Brockton, which he does a couple of times a week, and he usually calls me ahead of time, I'll say, just do it and trust that God is going to allow us to prosper. We're going to find the fund somewhere. That's a scary prospect, but I think that's going to be happening more and more this year. Yesterday, we had a meeting, the council convened a meeting, of clergy representing an array of denominations across the Cape with a very clear intention of talking with them about what is happening and how can we respond. And one thing I did focus on is the Regional Network to End Homelessness, particularly the triage hotline. And what I want to share with you is that every clergy person there was very enthusiastic, very relieved, and very supportive of what you've done, actually, what we all have done together, because it is a unique collaboration, to assist the needy. And they pledged to participate. We had a television program last week. We taped with Alan Trebet and Betsy Fontz specifically on this topic, and I believe it's going to be released on Friday. I wanted to make sure that all the other, your news release was out and everybody was all together on the same path. So I think that will make a huge difference. And the comments that we heard yesterday was that finally, case management. And this is from clergy who are not, it's not part of seminary training as case, but they recognize that when they provide someone who comes into their church with a bag of food or a food card or motel night, they're back again. Or they send that person, a pastor from Rooster, said he knows that Duffy has assistance, so he'll either drive the client or send them into Hyannis. I said, the goal is to provide services in the town of Oregon, which was also very well received. So that's good news and bad news. I will continue to keep you informed about how the Regional Network Triage Hotline is working. I have high hopes. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to work collaboratively and to, the end result is, or our main goal, common goal, is to serve the needs of families. I just want to take one more moment to tell you that before I left the office this morning, I received a phone call from a woman on Nantucket, 50-year-old grandmother, who has custody of her granddaughter and also has a child of her own. And because of the granddaughter's needs, she's not able to work, and she has never been in the system. She has no idea what she's doing. And I was a wee bit alarmed because she called from Nantucket, but she had called another agency who referred her to the Council of Churches. She is going to lose her home. She's going to lose her car. Her utility is going to be shut off, and she's at risk of losing custody of the child because she won't have a safe environment. There's nothing that, I mean, unless I can come up with $5,000 is going to change the situation. Refer her to a baby center, and I will make some phone calls to some churches on Nantucket. And I asked her if she had applied to Nantucket Social Services, and she had, and she said, they don't have any money. And this is anywhere of us who's had the rug pulled out for circumstances that we never anticipated. Same time yesterday morning, what triggered my memory was a baby center. I was called down to a baby center. Another woman from Nantucket, whose husband was in an accident, he's being rehabbed in New Bedford, so she comes across. And she also, she rents on Nantucket, and she is at risk of losing her housing. She's working with CORD because of her husband's situation. But they're just, we can provide just so much, but it's huge. I don't know where to begin. I told this woman from Nantucket, I'd call her later this afternoon. Hopefully, I'll make a connection in one of the churches. But what's happened with one woman, it was an accident that her husband was hurt, and they're out of, they just don't have income until they, CORD can get disability in place. So she's, she may be okay. But the 50-year-old grandmother doesn't know what to do and hasn't known what to do, and has a $700 utility bill, and the company is calling her. They're going to take the car back, and she's going to lose her house. Because she didn't know how to begin this recovery process four months ago. It was going to get better. It was going to go away. So while we have less funds available from the faith community, difficulty certainly with the county to close their budget gap. State doesn't have any money. Folks are really struggling and suffering.
You said that across the Cape, conservatively, you're estimating $750,000. Is that indirect grants from the, that you are able to acquire through state funding and that sort of thing? This is through collections and in-kind donations from your congregation?
Yes, from the, and it's not from, it doesn't come to the Council of Churches.
Right. It goes to each church.
It's what a church will hand out if they have a poor folk, if poor folks in trouble coming to their doors. Or they make donations to Housing Assistance Corporation, $200, $300 a month, a year, whatever. All of that cumulative. The largest group, St. Vincent de Paul. It's huge. It's a lot of money. And they do a lot to raise the money. But within the Catholic churches, the revenues are down, donations are down, folks are losing their jobs. So, and I think we're all part of this garment, and there are bigger holes in the garment right now.
So in addition to that, how much would you say across the board, across the region, is this funding, is our grants and that line items, that, I know that they're being pulled back now. You're saying at least $200,000 is going to be gone. But how much generally, in addition to the $750, is brought in from public funds to help support?
Let me give you an example. I applied for assistance through a foundation that traditionally will give me, will award what I ask for, or at least three-quarters of that amount. And I got 1%.
And how much would you normally ask for?
$10,000.
If you would ask for $10,000, so you got $1,000?
Yeah. That's huge.
That is huge.
Because in the past, because I would say, okay, that's all right, because I know that they're going to give the money to Independence House.
Right.
And I can go to blank, blank church, and go to that one, and go to that one, and I can cobble together. I can't do that. And at the same time, the foundation that found it necessary to say, wish we could, but we can't, had a huge response to their RFP. So they had a sort of triage again, you know? Who needs it the most?
No, I just find the numbers interesting because I would like to, at some point, even within all of these meetings with the Regional Network, I would love to just know all the budgets, you know? It's hard to ask everybody to bring in their budget, including us. But if you had an idea of how much money was brought in and spent on these issues, on people in need, it would be an interesting figure to come up with, and how are we using it effectively? I think that is the purpose of the Regional Network, so we're not duplicating efforts. And Duffy can concentrate on individuals and families, you know, that sort of thing. So that has gone very well, and it has been a unique collaboration with some positive results, considering a lot of people even doubted it in the room.
Yeah. Well, the 800 number will go out probably tomorrow, Friday. So let's see what kind of, you know, how the, if it increases or if it stays stable as it is now. I was at a meeting the day before yesterday of the policy board, and they had some numbers to report.
Right. And it also helps us track people who have come, and now they are in the system, and you can follow up, as opposed to you give a loaf of bread or something, and then they're back the next day. And what is really happening with these people? Are we really helping them?
Now, what I didn't do this morning, when, I'm going to just use the name Mary called me from Nantucket, I did not give her the 800 number.
Right.
It's just overwhelming, even though Nantucket is part of the Regional Network. I need to go back and sit in my office and call a couple of churches on Nantucket and see if there are any immediate resources there. And I'm just not sure what is available for her. It's almost, I've never felt this way before, but I almost feel hopeless that I don't think we're going to pull this one off.
She has, again, she has a whole gamut of things happening to her, and there are people all over the Cape that have at least one or two or three of those things happening.
Or what I'm talking is all. And they're primarily women who have, who just are total, I mean, I've walked that path years and years ago. It's going to get better tomorrow. Something is going to happen. It's going to be all right.
Right. Because you don't know what else to do. So you're just hoping. Okay.
It's very frustrating, I think, to people that do what we do, to believe that government at all levels has a responsibility to support safety net issues. And you're bringing up safety net issues. I think when we start talking about, you know, individual dollars here, dollars there, I hope we don't lose sight of the fact that we're talking about a vulnerable population, and you've already described it, of people that do not have the inner assets or resources in order to take care of the problems they have. I know from my personal experience, it takes a while to learn how to successfully advocate for anything. Okay. Now, your problem, one of the problems you described, there was an article in The Economist this week about this is a worldwide problem, because people, the governments are falling back based upon, you know, what they have, and they're turning towards the churches. And the churches, who historically, as you've described, are supported by the congregations, were the ones who were directly affected by this. And there's a lot of fear out there. Now, I don't, it would be Pollyannaish for me to suggest that, okay, all of this will go away. You know, I think we have to continue to stay hopeful. You know, that phrase about, let us live in hope whilst we die in despair. I think it's very important to remember now. But in this situation right now, what do you think that we can do right now? We don't have money, but we do have interest. We do have enthusiasm. We do have, let's see, there must be some, you know, some way that we could mobilize assets or resources in order to, you know, in order to address this problem. What can we do right now?
I think we're doing it all, Bill. I really do. And I, this is my first response to you. I think that's what concerns me most. I think we are doing all we can do. I think you, as a county government, I recognize that when you had surplus funds available, and we came and said we need, I mean, some of those programs that are responding now to those folks in need were established because you funded them or seeded them a number of years ago. I don't think you, as a county government, you don't have the money. I think you can't do anything. But I think you can be, and that's why we're here, and I'll let Tom speak to it more fully, is take what I've shared with you and be prepared to continue, to respond when the economy recovers. That, don't forget who your partners have been. I mean, the faith community is going to do whatever we can do to continue to help. It's not me at the level that it has been because the dollars aren't there. Same situation you're in.
The thing that I was most pleased with when we went to that budget hearing was, you know, how the President Murray did speak about supporting the money for the mentally ill, and that she, and historically, she's been right there for that population. And I was happy to, let's say, to say thank you. And I wish, and I wish I had the kind of resources that, you know, that they can claim at the state, you know, let's say, to continue to look at that. But there are a lot of organizations that, you know, that are all sort of intermeshed and working together. The No Place to Hate organization, for example, are trying to move forward with, you know, the things that might help some of the children. I see children in the schools, in middle schools and in high schools, that there's an increase in what I would call frustration and anger because there's so much going on at home. Perhaps the school is the only safe place where they can speak to some of this frustration. And there's a, you know, there's a great need to sort of calm some of that down. And I don't know where that comes from, without providing some more stability in the places where this anxiety is growing. But in any case, you could always count, and it's not an empty promise, you know, when we have money, I've always felt that, you know, that our responsibility was to support, protect the safety net, because there are many people that can advocate for themselves. There are people that cannot. And I've told previous boards of commissioners that when they said, well, just throw some money at it and go away. I said, no, no. There are populations that will always need our support, and we cannot forget about them as we move forward.
I wanted to comment on that point too, because in terms of government's role in providing public infrastructure, which is not just stones and mortar, but it's like the Regional Network. That's an infrastructure that helps to meet a specific need. And you pointed out that even though that was created back when the county, or there were certain efforts like that made when the county had the money, and we don't, but to continually to be aware of that and make sure those infrastructures are maintained and supported by government, because that's what we should be doing. And so...
And I think for all of us, I'll use the word that comes to my mind, is our attitude. Someone asked me years ago in our seminary, describe your approach to ministry. And for me, it's to live and serve in the attitude of Jesus. And so that's my attitude. We all need to have, I believe, an attitude about how we work together. And I think that over the last, at least as long as I've been here working with you, our attitudes are meshed. We're trying to do the best we can with what we have, even though we have to sometimes struggle with the best way to do that.
Which is why it's important for you to share that with us too, so that we're aware, even though we don't have that financial contribution at this point. But we do need to be aware of what you're struggling with, because there are ways that we can help support that struggle.
So Tom has the...
Tom? Yep. Three things that we're thinking of doing in the midst of a situation as it is recording. First, let me just say, for 40 years, I've been, my entire adult life, I've been working in situations where everybody says it's hopeless. I mean, I was in South Boston, Roxbury during busing 36 years ago. It was the end of the world, sheil. I mean, we didn't, there was no way forward from that.
That's right.
It was the end of the world. And I worked in housing projects in South Inman, Roxbury, with teen pregnancy issues, and there was no future. There was absolutely no future in 1988. So I think what's really important, a gift that the faith communities can offer into the mix, is statements of hope or ways to find a future within what seems to be a futureless issue. So I think that's one thing that faith communities can offer into the body politic. And I certainly will continue. That's my own little editorial here to add in. The three things that we're thinking of doing, one is, this is not exactly Council of Churches, but it relates to faith communities in general. The 14 Brazilian congregations on the Cape, all of which, well, no, we want exception in Falmouth, but almost all of which are in Hyannis, represent, you know, thousands of people who sometimes are under the radar, or often are under the radar. And those of you, I think all of us know some of the Brazilian community, one thing to recognize that they do is that a lot of their social services efforts are within their own. They don't go to the government. They're afraid of you. I mean, they're afraid of ICE. They're afraid of things. I think helping them become more, having more conversation with other faith communities and with the Council of Churches is what we're trying to do, bringing some of them onto the board, talking with them about things, will help them to share with us ways that they're coping. And then, the situation is pretty hopeless for them, some of them too, and has been for some years. So one thing is, is the initiatives continue to go on to try to have these 14 congregations be able to converse more with the other 100 faith communities on the Cape, because I think that would be a helpful thing for us in terms of sharing. And those of you who know a lot of these people who belong to the Brazilian churches, they're very hopeful people, despite all of the things that we can't even dream of that they've faced. So I think that's one facet. The second is, on the Board of Directors of the Council of Churches, one way or another this year, we intend to have a more sustained reflection time on the role of faith communities and government and the private sector, the different players within the social service and human services network. One thing we can do, and Diane is alluding to the $750,000, to do a more accurate study to see, is it a right number, or is it way more, or somewhat less? It's not a lot less for sure, but probably somewhat more. So to do a more sustained survey of that is a helpful piece of data. But on a more philosophical or more, a good theory can help with the future, as well as any practical thing, to come up with an analysis of where we go from here. We've all met people who say the government shouldn't be involved in this. It should be churches, or it should be this. And we've all met people who say churches shouldn't be involved in this. It should be government. So to try to have some sustained reflection on those questions is the second thing we intend to do this year. Excuse me. And the third thing to say is, every year, in some fashion or other, representatives from faith communities have gotten involved in the budget cycling. And some of the individuals who get involved are sort of like John the Baptist crying in the wilderness kind of individuals.
You all know who that is.
It was you, truly.
Yeah. No, so, and some of us wear neckties and are not crying as much, but it's still, you know, so there's different levels of people who come to you, and of course, to the Finance Committee and the delegates, and to the Assembly of Delegates themselves. That won't stop. That will continue. I'm sure, you know, it has to. Because we want to just be transparent and open when we're all tranquil in conversation at this moment, that it's Christian churches and other faith communities, Jewish and Hindu and, feel it's their mandate to be prophetic. It's their mandate to say these things, even if somebody's not listening. So that will continue to happen. Sort of the third thing to say is the relationship to that. And maybe in the midst of some of the crying in the wilderness and appealing and prophetic trying to share, some wisdom will come from all of that together. So I think, I just wanted to say that will continue. It's not like we're going to go back to the Board of Directors and just think and come where they report.
Right.
If you did anything other than that, why are you doing what you're doing?
Yeah. You've always said that, Bill.
No, it's part of the job.
You know, Tom, you raised a very interesting point with the Brazilian community, because we have a multicultural and multinational community here, people from a lot of other countries. And I had an opportunity to speak to a group one time, Webner, the Awafoi National Esther Resort.
Yeah, yeah.
There is someone there who was helping to teach a group of people who came from a variety of countries, Europe, Asia, South America, Africa, wherever. And they were, some were fairly new to this country. Some had been here a while, but they had formed their own community, so to feed and nurture one another. And what happens is, they come from countries where they're, in some cases, where their government doesn't work for them. And so they come with a very negative viewpoint of government as more of an intruder than a helper, I guess.
Or something to be suspicious of.
Yes. And so my role was to come and explain to them how government in this, in the town and the county could work for them. And so I think it's kind of important to do that, is to let them understand that this is a friendly government, and we want them to understand how it... is a friendly government, and we want them to understand how it works, and how it can work better for them if we are more aware of what their needs and concerns are.
They probably were surprised to be with Kings. In addition to my work with the Council of Churches, I'm involved, the Human Rights Commission, involved in the Immigrant Committee, the Immigration Issues Committee. And so I've been involved in a lot of that over the years. And I'll say, one of the things, you know Jackie Fields, of course.
Oh, yes.
We were shocked at the number of Tibetans in Hyannis. There was a demonstration on some issues about China, the Dalai Lama, and there were 55 Tibetans at this demonstration in Hyannis. So when I speak about the large number of Brazilians, and it is the largest number of immigrants that we have, it's by no means excluding the fact that recognizing that we, from all continents, that we have to recognize, it's not sleepy Cape Cod, that we've got our own good mix of alive and vibrant things happening.
Well, if I could just add to that, I mean, I think that that is the misconception, because it's been like that for many years, with our shipping, you know, people from the islands coming here, going back and forth from Jamaica and Brazil, you know, the Portuguese Brazilian, of which I have cousins, in-laws, who are Portuguese Brazilian, and they tell me that that is authentic, the Brazilian restaurant there. But that's the best. But it is the immigrant, I think that they're insulated because they're afraid, not to ask for help for other things, but for those who might not be quite fully documented, you know, you're opening up doors that, you know, for another couple of months, we'll get over this, you know, but if we have to expose ourselves now, all of that work could be done. So, and I understand their feeling of, and I think all immigrants, we all came and we all had our groups that helped us sustain ourselves as we assimilated into the cultures. So...
Well, certainly one of the places that many of the nationalities feel comfortable is in their faith communities, that they feel comfortable, that the government won't come there after them.
Right.
That they can...
If we keep some of those lines, but there are other lines that we can collaborate on.
Absolutely. And I, and I, we've got to do more about helping them feel comfortable to come to the Council of Churches, to Anglo-Society, to government, and all of those.
American Indians are not that different. They like to work on their own, and they do not really seek help.
The other thing is, they all brought lunch, they made lunch, each one of them, from the country, from their own country.
Oh, sounds like fun. I wish I had it.
It was the most amazing day I've ever had, it was great. Yep, just being able to eat some of those wonderful foods from other places. And there are places here on the Cape where they can actually buy the specific kinds of ingredients that they need in order to make this food, which is amazing, a stock and shop by a door there.
Sheila, we're going to get the art, get the word of stuff, like, on that.
I know. Anyway.
Not to lighten a very difficult...
Well, March 6th, a multicultural fair is going on at the college.
When?
March 6th, on Saturday.
March 6th. And March 4th is the Intervate Multicultural Worship at the church where our Council of Churches is. What time is that at? Seven o'clock.
At night or morning?
In the evening, yeah. Okay, good.
Because I think seven o'clock in the morning, Great Cross Heroes.
Yes, we have a roast breakfast.
Seven at night?
And I'm having my board join me. What do you see us doing here? What do you... Well, I know that you're in the process of creating or developing your budget for 2011. I'd like you to consider, in the narrative, I know you can't do more than that, but recognizing the, why don't you want to use the partnership, or the gifts that the faith community of the Cape bring to our common efforts, our common concerns. I think it would be a good thing for one of the faith communities to be recognized in that way. And begin to establish what I said earlier, I know you have, you know, through the Compassion Fund that you endorsed and approved, are very willing to do that. But this will begin to set the tone or the attitude for when, and I do believe, hopefully, our finances are back to where we all can live very comfortably. And so it's there, and we're going to work, continue to work together in good times. And...
We have a wonderful opportunity, because I know the Assembly has asked us to actually make a presentation on your budget.
I was going to bring that up today.
And in that presentation, we certainly could incorporate that, not just for the sterile document that we pass over the counter.
Right.
I know the burning passion...
Black and white. It'll have color in this stuff.
Sometimes, on a practical level, can I say, sometimes the folks that I talk to in the EFA communities find it hard to access information as to whether they're supposed to go to a meeting. The county website, of course, is always, we're working on it.
And what I'll do is, Diane usually puts together a schedule of what all the things are, and I'll make sure that Diane...
Yeah, that's good. That was, that schedule was really important, listing, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
We never did do this over coffee, but we can still have coffee and talk about other stuff, so.
This is better.
Actually, with being one...
Oh, you know, before we, I should ask you, if you wanted to give people a takeaway, after all you are on holiday.
Yeah.
Make a direct pitch, I mean, before we just talked to us.
I could publicize the Andrew Faith Program, that would be in competition with your program. I really, you know, I'm not...
There's no competition in that, this is all complimentary. You know, we're all, I think that as long as we're moving towards the same goal, the same direction, we're all working together.
What is the number, what is the main number of the Council on Churches, if they wanted to sort of, the center of operation, in a way? Well, I have good news, and this could be my closing comment. Our website is now up and running. We're very fortunate to have an intern from Emerson College through Cape Cod Community College, who worked with Communications Coordinator, who again is available to us through a grant from one family in a Episcopal city mission. And the website is caypecodcouncilofchurches.org. And I urge folks to take a look, and everything is there that you would want to know about the Council of Churches, how to contact us, our programs, and upcoming events, and news events. And this is all faiths that they can access? So if they are of a particular faith, if they go on your website, they can then locate, are there links to the other churches? No, it's all, at this point, we don't have the links, that's what our webmaster hopefully is going to plug in. We just want to get it up and running. But you can link into a baby center, or Bridge to Hope, or Hands of Hope, or any of our programs, and the Board of Directors, and the staff. So it's a beginning, it's grassroots right now. Okay. And this is basically to deal with human services, or just to get information about what the churches are doing across the Cape in general? That's what it will be? Information, yes, yeah. And we will be able to link to other faith communities.
Sheila, to respond to you, if people are looking for individual faith communities on the Cape, if on the internet, and if you Google any town, and you put either faith community, or churches, or a particular denomination, whatever that might be, you'll find information about faith communities in your town. And virtually every faith community is trying to keep up the hope and keep up the good work.
Right, so whether, even if you're looking for salvation or assistance?
All or...
You can go to these, in both.
In the midst of all this, yeah. So Google is, all the search engines are very helpful.
And for folks who don't have access to internet, the Council's number is 508-775-5073. And we can give you whatever information you need, any direction or assistance. And we can pray with you on the phone. Okay?
Thanks, thanks all.
You can call us, and we'll pray with you as you develop your budget. You might be able to call us. You might not be able to make any calls.
She might be able to call.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
I know that she sometimes acts as groom.
Yeah, that would be great.
Especially if you want to buy time, something, you have a foreclosure situation.
Yes, yeah.
She might be able to at least buy you some time.
Terrific. Thank you, thank you.
Good, thank you very much, Diane and Tom, both.
Bye now.
I'm going to go get Maggie, because I know she has an issue to talk to her.
Okay. Could I, do you want to do the summary while they're...
Yes, let's do that. I had a question. It was rejecting the bid, the sole bid from the Mastana Institute. We'll be in touch, good to see you.
Bye now.
Bye. I've got the one I printed at home, and more on here now. Great country.
Yeah, which number was it?
Healthy Connected Cape Cod Program.
Oh, I was concerned about that, too. What, number 20?
Number 20.
You rejected the sole bid from the Mastana Institute.
I'm not sure, they didn't meet the criteria within the bid, or...
Or they were the sole bid, and we don't know.
And that is Healthy Connected Cape Cod is our...
Right, so there has to be.
But that, isn't that the food program in the summer, Healthy Connected? I, sorry. Healthy Connected.
It might be a nutrition program, it may and may not be the Healthy Connected program. I thought they gave money to us, not the other way around.
Can I ask?
Mm-hmm. You can.
What are we discussing today? I know that some things were put off because I wasn't here last week, and...
No, nothing was really put off.
Are we supposed to have our, are we developing a mission and charter for the IT today?
Marcus, no, Marcus is doing it, and he's going to bring it to us. We said two weeks.
And we're going to be putting our input into him, we forward what we think...
Well, he's bringing us a draft, and then if we have input, we can do it there. This is the mission for the IT department.
Right, okay. All right, so that's, I didn't know if you had homework due today.
And coming back, no, you didn't have homework on that score.
All right. I mean, you have some homework, because, I mean, and I did find that Teresa Martin's websites were very helpful, I just didn't be able, you know, really take things from it, and...
Well, actually, that would, Marcus would have that, because he's putting that piece together, as far as what they're doing with regard to IT. It's a topic that comes up at the, you know, at these national meetings all the time, and everyone that's successful put money into it to begin with, and put money into maintaining it. And the other part is that they've successfully integrated the way you input from the departments, because if it isn't maintained on a regular basis from the departments that have interest in getting information out, it just sort of stops.
Right, that's right, I think that committee is good, because they can keep each other informed of what they're doing, and then, if there's areas that they can, you know, bundle up on, certainly.
Well, that's also going to be all part of Marcus' proposal.
Marcus' proposal to us, because actually, looking at the department...
You adopted Peter's proposal, though.
Yes, we did, and we accepted it, and whether the department should be a help desk, and then other services are contracted, we brought in, as Peter suggested.
Great. Is that what we're discussing a bit today?
No.
Actually, Mike Gigi was originally on our program today, but...
He was.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why they canceled, but maybe he just wasn't available. This is the priority, and I think I sent those to you, but those were the kind of ones that we identified.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, I think you...
So...
Things good.
I don't know how far you got, but yeah, kind of, the next step is for us to formulate the IT committee, develop the charter, mission statement charter, whatever.
And you're going to propose that to us, and if there's anything that we, if we see anything that we think is of use, do we just forward it to you, like, you know...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So you want to know that before, then after?
Yeah, I think the next step that I talked to Peter about with Maggie is getting together with him and kind of formulating the charter, you know, draft of the charter. Actually, Teresa was very helpful, she sent a number of websites.
Yeah, those are very good.
That was really useful. So we'll be pulling together that. I won't say over the next three weeks, because as I said to Pat earlier today, I'm pretty much going to be focused on pulling together the budget, and I have some stuff to do on the performance for the Sebag Brewster and Harwich projects. But I think, you know, by the end of March, early April, we'll be able to pull together a committee meeting and have the charter and...
But shouldn't we have something for the budget, though? Because the budget that John presented may not be the same.
No, and I have, John sent me some other items for his budget, and I have to look those over, and I have to put together a budget for the IT department for your consideration.
That's consistent with whatever the mission statement and the...
And the report that Peter's done, exactly. That's what I have to pull together next. That's kind of the next thing I have to do.
That's the next thing.
So, that we should be able to talk about next week.
Okay. So do we want to, do we want to reverse the order, and hear from Maggie first, and then you, and then us?
However, you guys just want to do it. Yeah, I just, I let Maggie know when we were done.
All right, Maggie's here.
Council of Churches.
Hey, Maggie.
Hi, guys.
Maggie, is there any reason you couldn't sit over there?
I don't want to.
Okay, this is the back of Maggie's head for the next half hour.
I didn't really want to. I object on principle. It's a personal issue. I just wanted to, remember we, Beth Albert handed in her resignation letter?
Yes. And March?
Her last day on the payroll will bill April 30th.
April 30th.
So this is now public record, and I wanted to talk about what, how you want to proceed. I can have an intent to fill a vacancy and a job announcement ready for you for your next board meeting, which would be...
That's right.
But I just wanted to, that has been how we normally, we waited, because Sheila's your liaison to the Human Services, so I'm looking to you for directions to how you want me to handle this.
Okay. I did speak with Beth, and of course, you know, felt very bad that she's leaving, and, but it is a situation, she's, you know, it's her fit, so she has to focus on it. She did say that she would stay till the 30th, and she does feel that if we could start interviewing sooner than later, she'd be happy to be part of that process. And once, if we did find someone and hire them, then she could help transition them. Because, let's face it, Beth has probably been the person, the Human Service Director that has understood how that position can function best, which is convening people together, collaborating, fostering collaboration and cooperation between the agencies, disseminating the information correctly. And she's done a super, super job on the regional network, because that has been, we all heard the expression of herding cats, that is like the biggest herd that I have seen, and she has done a great job, and it will be very hard, too.
Well, if we are, I think, want her to welcome her participation in this, two months is not a long time, too.
No, to advertise and recruit.
So...
I would authorize it today.
I would authorize it today as well.
I would authorize it today, sooner the better.
Go ahead.
I just want to bring this up, because I always bring up the points of transition. Sometimes, it's useful to think about whether or not the function that we have as an FTE would be something that would be a contract position. And what I mean by that, we could perhaps use a consultancy or a contract with an organization or an agency that's not directly in the county, but we, you know, we use that as a method of, let's see, reducing our overhead by, you know, putting it as a contract. I bring that up, because I usually mention it, you know, at those times, and I don't know if these are ones you have any appetite for that.
Well, the only caution I would issue, and I'm sure Maggie would echo these comments, is typically, a contractual entity in, under federal law, you give them a set of things that you want them to do, they go off and do them. And they have a product that they deliver back to you. That is not really typical of how this position works. There's so many, you know, I would say challenges, you heard a bunch of them today, the whole coordination effort, that's really something that, under, I think, federal labor law, is an employee, and is always defined as one. So then if you define it some other way, you run the risk down the road that, for whatever reason, it's challenged, and the person ends up being an employee anyway.
Well, under the IRS code, if you have a contract, it's a service that you're contracting for, not an individual. The person cannot have space in this facility, cannot use any town equipment.
Supervised staff.
And you're supervised, and cannot be supervised, because it's a contract. You lay out exactly what you want in the contract, and the person doesn't, comes back and says, here it is. I don't think, I appreciate you raising it, because now it's clear that the distinction would not work well for this type of position.
Well, it's a good question, because it would be a fundamental change in what we're trying to do with that position.
And also, as us, you know, the one thing that, in Beth and I talking about what she accomplished, and what do we feel strongly about going forward with, I do think that it is a very good thing that the county was the convening in the past through the lead agency on this regional network, and you would need someone in-house to be the person who was monitoring that. She's done a fantastic job, because it really, it's been political as well as substantive.
But I think the major point is that by having the person as an employee, there is a strong connection to the county.
To the county we have sworn.
If you contracted it, there would be no really strong connection.
I agree.
People would not see that county support in the position. People would not see that county support in the position.
Right.
So I think that, I can see what we might want to change unless you see something, Maggie, in the job description or in advertising that we would ever change. I think Beth has performed exactly the way we would expect.
Well, sure, I think she's.
And gone beyond, yes, no question.
In fact, that, I, I'm very, you know, I'm not too optimistic of getting someone that could have the impact that she had in such a short period of time because it was only a matter of months that she was really in charge and was, you know, was essentially providing confidence to that community that had spent a year, you know, in being serious reservations about whether or not, you know, we were really, the county was really effectively going to, you know, address the, address the problems. And again, thank you for, you know, for at least discussing the conversation because I know that the public would certainly want to know that we had considered that.
Right, so, okay, so if I may then, following what you just said prior to both comments, and I just ask for authorization, vote to advertise the position for Human Services Director. They will not likely go until papers, especially the Globe until the 7th of March, which will be the first Sunday in March, it's not going to happen for this Sunday's paper. Could give them the times for this Sunday, but not for the Globe for this Sunday. So just quickly on a schedule, looking at the calendar, you know, when you advertise March 7th, resumes potentially due March 26th, interviews April 2nd, I would suggest that one of you, Sheila, I'm assuming usually you designate it to your rep, which would be Sheila, we need an interview committee to interview your candidates, you know, the following week. So you'd be interviewing the first.
In the past, I think all three commissions interviewed.
Yeah, no, that is not the case, it was not who interviewed Beth.
No.
Because then it becomes a public meeting.
Right.
Which is inappropriate for interviewing of a management position, it's not your administrator. You may have all met her differently because I was on the interview committee and you were, all three were not there. There's one commissioner who's appointed to review and sit on the interview committee.
And then those candidates.
When did the, because I remember specifically the three of us meeting with Beth to decide whether or not we're going to hire her.
I actually think they did the final.
We did the final recommendation back, but you did not do the screening and the scanning of the interviews, I only had one commissioner. And I believe that was Mary.
Mary was there, yeah.
Mary was the commissioner.
But they did, in public session, they did do the three.
Correct, that was not, that was not.
Forgive me, that was my, you know, that was what I was supposed to.
All right, so a motion to.
Authorize the intent to fill the position.
With advertising on March 7th and the press process as usual.
And I, if you're going to designate Sheila to sit on the interview and screening committee, I would, you could do that now.
In the same.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so I'm just thinking at the time, so 7th, what if we did two weeks? So that would be make Sunday the 21st, so back 20, come back on Friday the 19th?
If we, if we ran them in the Globe for two weeks.
Or just, just ran it on the 7th or whatever, and I'm just saying only two weeks for response so that.
I, I don't.
The deadline for response is Friday.
It's too soon, Mark, and I also think that there, and I have to confirm with Beth, that there may be some other Human Services organizations that we want to post this on. And, you know, I understand the desire to have somebody here while Beth is here, but I don't want to rush the hiring process and then have to do it again.
Right.
So I think you need to give more than two weeks and, and advertise it more than just the, the required Cape Cod times and the Globe. I think that there are other postings that you have to get out there and leave it out there at least in three weeks.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there's a way we can get it back by the 19th.
I agree. And also I do think, I mean, Beth isn't like leaving the state, it's not like she's going back to Pennsylvania, so I do think that she would be available even after the fact to come in and go over things with this person. It's not going to be, you know, that, that bad.
Did she say she would?
Yeah, she did, she said that she's, she's more than, she's not going anywhere.
Because I don't want to, we're volunteering without having her.
No, 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 she's, she's, she sees the position so, and, and knows that it should be related, yes.
A motion to some?
I'll move that.
So a motion to.
We're moving to open up the position and, and, let's see, and advertise it and designate Sheila as being the commission's representative on the interview committee.
Okay.
But in terms of the rest of the composition of the interview committee, would that be the usual suspects, you and Mark?
Mary and Beth.
And Beth, right.
Okay.
Is there any more to that?
You are the human resources person.
Ben. The only question I had is, the last time we did this, because the position was vacant, we involved somebody from the Human Service Advisory Committee, the chair, I think we have the chair, so I would ask Beth for her recommendation on that, I would default to her on that.
I would too.
Right. We had it, there was a reason we did it because we didn't have an incumbent. Now that we have Beth, I don't think that the need is there, but I also don't want to step on toes, so I will defer to Beth's discretion on that.
Yes, and the Human Service community was concerned about having something to say about this.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was, it was a different.
So let me, I'll find out, so I don't need a vote to establish that committee and seeing the vote to have you be the representative.
And to.
The intent to fill, to move forward.
I, I, I move that.
Second. She moved it.
Oh, second, second, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none, motion carries.